All right, it is six oh five. It is six oh five P M on Monday, September 12th, 2022. It's our regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are Director Whitfield, Director Barr, and Director Johnson and myself. Board President Bumpus is absent tonight. Also present is Interim Superintendent Dr. Marcy Larson, executive staff and members of our staff as well as members of the community. And I want to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting and I will be backup QB for our board president as she is absent tonight. So keep me on the straight and narrow teams. Make sure I don't mess something up. And the members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link on the board docs website. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. All right, next up is approval, a review of the agenda for tonight's meeting. There is an update to the agenda. We have added to agenda item seven point zero one accounts payable vouchers have been added to the attachments for September 16th. So there's no change to it. It's just an adding of information that is available on there as a link that you can see. It is A P Board List nine sixteen twenty twenty two is PDF that is available on that item. And again, that is item seven point zero one. And is there an approval for the agenda for tonight's agenda? Oh, sorry, motion. Is there a motion for the board agenda tonight?
I move that Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated September 12th, 2022.
Second, all in favor, please raise your hand. All right, and it passes four to zero. Moving on to item three point zero one, public hearing of redistricting. It is the second and final reading for that. Public hearing is held for the school, the school director district stated from the most recent census. And our contact was Bob Schweitzer, who, who presented last board meeting with the some image data systems attached are the the proposed population reports for each of the proposed, each of the proposed board or director districts based on the census 2022 data. And are there any questions about that that we have about the redistricting that we went through from last week? This is our second reading and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the approval for that would be in our next meeting if there are no other questions for tonight.
I just have a couple of quick questions and then a comment, just because it's, this is something we've never done before. So when would the, this new map become effective? Okay, so we'll find out when they're effective and then my, my follow up question, that would be where can people go to find out which district they can run in? And then a reminder to everyone in Monroe School District that while you, you can only run in the district that you live in, everybody in the district votes for all five positions, something that came up a few times during the campaign last year. So just figure any opportunity we can have. And then the comment that I have is, it was, it was interesting to me to look at these maps and proposals and to consider those demographics and projected growth areas compared to the seven year plan that we talked about a few board meetings ago. We're talking about how much more growth is going to happen in the chain length area that potentially there's a new school there. And so it was just interesting to me to think about that district in, in this shift was already 2,000 people above, 2,000 voters above about all of the other districts. And so it'll just be interesting to see what happens over the, the next like seven years with our plan, 10 years with the next census information and how the areas will keep shifting. So just interesting.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Dr. Larsen, it would be good if we can get Bob to reply on that question, I think of the, of the implementation of when that goes into effect would be helpful.
And I think we may have it already in the materials.
Okay, we can get that out. And then one thing, just to reiterate is these are lines that are being shifted from within the Monroe School District. We're not annexing any other parts that may or may not be, yeah. So, but anyway, so this is just a re, a rebalancing to make sure that we're having even demographics represented across our lines. Chuck?
Just a comment. So within the school district, we have total population of thirty eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen, which just seems like a huge amount. When I have looked at the service area for the fire department before in terms of a concentric circle for business, it must be by the same light growing a lot. And that just talks about our community. Seems like a huge number of people in our little Monroe community. So just to comment.
Yeah, we are growing quite a bit. So we don't need to approve on this because this is up for approval for next. This is just informational purpose. So we don't need to vote on anything. That will be approval for our next meeting. Correct? Okay, correct.
And you have some language there to see if we have any public comment on, on the proposal at all.
See, you guys are keeping me on my toes. All right, I'm just going to read this to make sure I don't miss anything. It says, now is the time for public hearing for proposed revisions to the director district boundaries, which we just did. Following receipt of the 2020 census data, the district is required to develop a plan that meets the requirements of board policy one one zero five and R C W twenty nine eight dot seven six dot zero one zero and must hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing. The plan was presented to the board on August 22nd, 2022 and is scheduled for adoption at the September 26th, which is our next meeting, 2022 meeting. Any person who wishes to be heard concerning the proposal revisions to the director district boundaries, please come to the podium and fill out an audience comments form requesting an audience with the board. This is also offered to those attending via Zoom and zero requests were received at this time for this matter. And I'm supposed to, since I'm supposed to wrap the gap. There we go. That was fun. The, the public hearing on the proposed revisions to the director district boundaries is now open. Any others? Okay. And all of my comment forms that I have are for items other than this issue. So I don't believe there are any public comments that have to do with this issue. Is that correct? Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, see no audience comments forums. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board out of the director district boundaries? Okay, thank you. And no Zoom comments on this. Okay. All right, there being no further speakers, the public hearing for the proposed revisions to the director district boundaries is now closed and I'm supposed to hit the hammer one more time. There we go. That's fun. All right, I'm going to circle back to just reading a statement that I forgot and to make sure that Director Bumpus does not get upset with me because she gave me lots of notes. I did want to reiterate that, just say to welcome tonight's meeting, all comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent or staff or through outside research. Right. Moving on, the next item in our agenda for tonight is four point zero one, audience comments. Go ahead and read my beginning statement here too, to make sure I'm on top of it. We welcome comments about the school board and district decisions, processes and concerns. I will take a few minutes to spend to remind everyone on how this works. Each speaker has three minutes. However, if several are here on the same topic, a representative may be selected for the group and speak for 10 minutes. And so in doing so, the individuals in that group yield their time to the representative. It is important to note that a separate process exists for concerns about staff. Audience comments during the school board meeting is not the forum for staff complaints. If you are here for that reason, please contact any staff member and they will help you learn more about the staff complaint process. Be aware that if at any time during these speakers' comments, their words begin to approach a personnel, a personnel concern, the board president will remind the speaker once to keep comments centered on district or school board decisions, processes and concerns. If that speaker continues with staff related comments, the board president will give a, give 30 seconds for the speaker to immediately sum up their thoughts and return to the audience. Again, please contact any staff member to help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. You may provide pub, you may provide public comments virtually if you are attending the meeting via Zoom. Information regarding public comments at school board meetings can be found on the website for our district. Thank you for your, oh, yeah, this is for after the public comments, of course. For technology, is there other any public comments that were filled out for online? Okay, we have three forms of any others need to be turned in for request, public comment requests. Okay, all right, the first public comment I have, come on up to the microphone is from Janine Burkhart. And Janine, just for the record, please state your name and your relationship to the Monroe School District.
I am Janine Burkhart. I am a resident for thirty some years in the school district. My children lived here and they've graduated and are now contributing society members. I just wanted to mention, I didn't write anything. I'm not a good speaker. I don't really care. But I do not approve of any CRT being taught in the school. I do not approve of any courageous conversations. I don't approve of anything that is going to bring children to think evil of each other just because of color their skin. So the conversations, the all that I've had been reading, everything that I've been studying up on, it's all so evil and it doesn't need to be in the school system. I, to me, reading, writing, math, reading, writing, math, history, all of those, those are necessary. But these other things are, they're coming in and they're political and I don't approve of them. And I just want you to know that that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next public comment is Sherabu Samante. Did I say your name correctly? You can please state your name and your relationship to the Monroe School District.
My name is Sherabu Samante. I am a parent with four kids in the district as well as an employee of the Monroe School District. So I've been married to twenty, twenty one years to my husband, Davi Bustamante, who immigrated to United States from Chile. We have four kids. One has graduated and three students are in the district. And we have skin in this game. That's what was said in our trainings in August. I am a school nurse and started my ninth year here with Monroe School District. I wanted to give some feedback regarding the courageous conversations training I participated in during professional training week in August. I wanted to explain some truths from my experience regarding racism. I have lived here in the United States as well as two other countries in the last 25 years. Racism knows no color or people group. It's a horrible problem worldwide. It affects all people groups. Racism is evil. That being said, what I heard from this training is that manners are racist, rules are white supremacy, talking white or thinking white is racist. Essentially only white people can be racist. Everything that used the word white had a negative connotation. The presenter had us do several exercises and several, and stated several times, this isn't done to make you feel bad as he's directing all his comments to the white people, but it just is what it is. As we talk about white culture, white thinking, white talking, white fragility, systemic racism, white privilege, want to tell you that these are theories and not truth. I, it will lead to division and not unity in our school community. The truth is, anyone can be racist, no matter what their skin color is. Let me tell you a personal experience. Our oldest son Mateo was asked to be part of the race and equity group at the high school last year. He's now going articulate and, and great with people and intelligent. And I didn't know he actually, how he felt in those meetings until after graduation. He told me anytime he shared his opinions or thoughts in those meetings, he was shut down and he was told he was wrong by other students as well as a staff member who led the meeting. He said the only time he felt that his voice was heard and acknowledged and there was productive meeting was when a man named Bill de la Cruz facilitated the conversations. Otherwise, because his voice didn't meet the narrative like courageous conversations, he was shut down and that is wrong. In the Bible, the book of Matthew says, Jesus says, love God with all your heart, your soul, your mind and strength and love your neighbor as yourself. This is what we teach our kids to love others and to show kindness and respect to everyone, that we don't treat anyone different based on the color of their skin. And I implore you as school board district, district members not to continue with the courageous conversation curriculum, which will add more division than unity. Go back to working with Mr. De la Cruz or any organization that does not teach only white people are racist and to help our community learn, move forward and unite in kindness and respect to all people. I'm stating I will no longer participate as an employee to any courageous conversation trainings. And if my kids come home stating it's coming through the classrooms from teachers, my husband and I will have to consider withdrawing our kids from the Monroe School District. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for your comments, Shara. We have one, we have one more comment for public comments and that is from Beth Nybert. Please state your name for the record and your relationship to the Monroe School District.
It's delightful to be back in front of you again. I'm speaking for a group of concerned citizens whose names I've listed on the docket there. My name is Beth Nybert. I am a grandparent. Second generations are enrolled in this school district. All, both of my daughters graduated from Monroe School District and my youngest actually bred, attended all years. I've been a contributing member in this community since nineteen ninety two. I want to speak tonight on courageous conversations and I echo the sentiments that were just shared and thank you so much for your boldness to speak up. I also want to go back to the July meeting, the board meeting when members, four individuals present, one via Zoom, spoke about the content and evaluated whether they should move forward with that conversation. And what I witnessed in that conversation before making a deciding vote, vote and final decision on moving forward appalled me. It disgusted me with this body because not only did one of your directors condemn another person's intelligence and research, but another one used, used tears to emotionally draw a certain vote. And here's what I say about any decisions made by a body who is supposed to be speaking and thinking of all citizens in this school board and this district is that when you make it based on an emotional decision in that moment, you were asked to stop and consider additional information. You should have stopped and given yourself a break and revisited that, that item. But having gone forward, having made the decision, you've spent a hundred thousand dollars on the education and the curriculum alone, not including a two day training where according to the O S D I website, you have three hundred and thirty two certified, certificated staff plus district office individuals that were to attend that, that training. All of this in a July after following a failed levy. I want to know where is that money coming from? Now let's talk about that education and that curriculum because I have seen and read a lot of it. And also what was presented to you in that original board meeting was the fact that this was actually put before the Supreme Court for Seattle schools and told clear back in 2007, do not proceed with that because it is bizarre and racist definitions of racism, which branded all whites and whites only, whites only as racists that claimed that individualism is a form of racism and claimed that that planning ahead, future time orientation was a right white characteristics, that minorities shouldn't be expected to exhibit out of the displays, out of the trainings alone in itself. There is a list of assumptions based on the culture. And I want to talk about competition, that being number one, win at all costs. Let me tell you, that is not a racist white supremacist thought. That is associated with every single athlete. Have you watched the Olympics yet? Did those individuals win at all costs? Did they work hard in order to get that? And oh, by the way, that that is also something else that's noted in here as a white characteristic and symbolism of racism is that to work hard is the key to success. As far as I know, that every individual in America that is given the opportunity to proceed, where's my time clock, by the way, guys, I want to see it. Okay, thank you, front center. Thanks. That working hard is key to success. Wherever I came from and whatever I came up from, and by the way, there might be some of you sitting there looking at me at the color of my skin and automatically assuming that I'm a white rest racist because of my birth origin, my birth origin and my ethnic background has no matter on the course. In the same way that as previous speaker mentioned, is racism is noted by unacceptance of other people and characteristics. And I value and appreciate every individual. Oh, by the way, husband is breadwinner and head of household. That's a white supremacist category also. What is that? That's the, that's the standard, original coming from where we started. That was the structure is that you had a man and a woman who are married and they had children, children. And the woman stayed home and take, took care of the family. But oh, let, let me go on. Okay. So I want to quote a, an associate editor of the College Fix that called courageous conversations, the poison that is reverse racism, a program. This smacks to me as though it is, well, not it, as though it is. It is, it defined, its definitions are a form of left wing fundamentalist theology built around authoritarian notions of institutional racism. So why am I even bringing this up to now? It's because I ask you to reverse the decision and stop proceeding with this agenda because nothing good is going to come from it. Anti-American critical race theory indoctrination of impressionable students is spreading from college campuses to elementary and secondary schools. This is, I'm not making this up. I'm reading educated individuals that have done the stories and done the background and done this history. Critical race theory persists that Americans institutions are rotten to the core because of their supposedly systematic racist foundations. Adoption of critical courageous conversations is revamping school curriculum to incorporate a narrative of white oppression of African Americans as well as Indian Americans and inputs from these social justice warriors who believe the United States is inherently racist country. I don't know about you, but I've never been called a racist until this school started to have that kind of a conversation about what is happening in our culture. Are we, any one of us perfect? I'll bet you I will not find a single one of us perfect in this room because we aren't. None of us. It fails to balance any of the statements and it gives the impression, by the way, that slavery was a Western European American innovation rather than acknowledging that slavery had already existed legally, I will add, in Africa where blacks had black slaves. And what we failed to do is embrace historical, what we are attempting to do is embrace historical revisionist revisionism that placates the social justice. What you're asking us to do is affirm that this is a good thing. Well, none of it is a good thing because what is happening is exactly separation and division in a culture when we should be working to unite and only united unity comes when we acknowledge the value, the value of each and every single individual, not based on the color of the skin. Because every single one of us in this room, if I'm looking around and just measuring the tones in your skin, quite likely the majority of us would be considered white supremist. I don't understand how you can see that this evil is so negative and contrary. I think about a kindergartner who's had a wonderful field. They, they go into the playground. I don't know about you, but kids are migrating just to kids that are the same size, looking at their eye level. Hey, can you play on this swing set with me? Sure, sure. And so some of the terminology that is being taught to our teachers, and by the way, out of this report that I'm reading from, any teacher who uses anti-American leftist propaganda for the, for the instructing his or her classroom should be killed, guilty of educator malpractice. This is what it says in these reports. And what I want us to do is stop this and work on recognizing that every individual is unique. Every individual has passion. Every individual has characteristics and gifts that are unique just to them. And it takes every single one of us in order to accomplish that. You were, and, and some artists are in the room. Some others are, are gifted in other ways, but you're going to stop a child or you're going to diminish a child. I focused on white whiteness. What happens on the other end of that spectrum is if you're not white, What happens on the other end of that spectrum is if you're not white, then you've been suppressed your whole life, that you've been told you can't succeed. I acknowledge that there's places where there's more of one skin cone, one ethnic background located in specific regions across our nation. But that doesn't make us racist here. That just means that there have been individuals that haven't populated here. For one reason or another, not because I wasn't welcoming as a neighbor, not because. You as a school board don't want to do the best thing for our kids, but here's what we have to recognize. What I saw in that board meeting was not a group of five individuals that recognized they have a responsibility. To every single child in this school district and you close your eyes to their needs. And I'm sorry, I'm a bit passionate about this. I'm a bit passionate because I see the horror. I see the horror of what's coming. I hope you will too, before it goes too far. Thank you for listening.
If your comments, are there any other comments for tonight? Thank you for your comments. We would like to remind everyone that the purpose of the school board meeting is for the board to conduct business. Conduct its business in public, therefore we do not respond to the remarks made during the public comment section of our meetings. These public comments are personal pain shared by community members that are not, not. And are not censored by the board or staff. As such, comments made by community members may not be in alignment with board policies or with values. And believe in Monroe School District again, thank you. We want to thank our community members for participating in our meeting this evening. That said, moving on to agenda item. Five, five point zero one, opening of school report. Dr. Larson, is that you?
That's me.
I see some Bearcat swag over there. And you got your team up here.
Oh, yeah. So my, my first piece of swag I took at home and my husband said, how nice. You bought me a sweatshirt and I said, no, this is for me and he was disappointed. So I'm going to have to make another visit to the Deca store. To get him a piece of swag to wear as well. So the opening of school, we, we wanted to share with you some of our observations and activities. With school opening, of course, just last week or most, most of our schools, Sky Valley, we still are getting ready. For students to arrive. I haven't had a chance yet to visit all the schools and I'm excited to do that. It's interesting, Sky Valley with it not being all the way open yet. I've been there twice just by chance for a couple of reasons. So that's been fun. What I learned when I went to Sky Valley is I need to start planning my travels around trains. So that's something new for me here in Monroe. I've been up to Salem Woods for the opening and I think Erin, Erin, you were with me there and we had a, a nice time greeting the bus drivers. Meeting some of the best drivers up there and seeing the kids coming in. Almost everybody was happy to be there. There was one student that. Didn't look terribly happy to be there, but I'm sure by today he's probably very happy and has settled in. Is out in, of course, at the high school, standing outside with Brett to greet the students, which was lots of fun, especially since. Of course, I'm familiar with Brett because we've crossed paths before. And then that spunky music teacher, which you might, somebody else may end up commenting on her. Who she's new to our district at Maltby. And she said, come and visit my classroom the first week, which I thought, yeah, she's probably a rookie. Who would invite the superintendent to visit the first week of school? I've never heard of such thing. She's not a rookie, but she is new to Monroe. And what an amazing, amazing teacher. Dan's giving me the look. I better not comment on her anymore because he's probably going to mention her. So anyway, I've had a great time meeting bus drivers, office staff, principals, facility staff, teachers, food service, paras. And universally, I would say, other than that one little boy that I came across there at Salem Woods. Everybody is just so glad to be back full-time and in person. And they love their jobs. They just love their jobs and are glad to be back and, and in spite of some hiccups, as you know, a little bit of smoke in the air. For example, and maybe a few lighting problems out there, you know, everybody just jumped in, responded. Took care of business to keep everything on track as best we can for the students and I, I'm just. I'm impressed with Monroe School District and really glad to be here and wanted you to know that. So with that, because otherwise I'm going to be stepping on everybody's sharing. Who do I kick off to? Is that you, Kim?
Thank you, Dr. Larson, and we're so glad you're here. And to Dr. Larson's point, it feels really good in our schools. It feels really good here in the district office and so, thank you. We have a presentation that's going to start with kind of a big overarching by the numbers and we're going to get down to talk about some of the work that we did. Before school started to help families and students. Then we have some, some work around, we're going to talk about elementary and secondary and some of our different departments, but. Things are going really well. It's been just a great start to the year. So by the numbers. He's on it. Jesse's on it. Somebody's over there behind the curtain moving things. Okay, so by the numbers, we got our latest numbers today and that's five thousand three hundred and twelve students. This does not include Sky Valley's numbers yet. Sky Valley doesn't have their first day of school until September twentieth. We have nine hundred and sixty-seven employees. We have two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight bus riders. And Kelly gave us the latest update this morning and so far in three days, not including today, we've served five hundred and seventy-two breakfasts. And three thousand eight hundred and eighty-two lunches. Can you believe that? Just a few days. I'm going to turn it over to Erin to talk about resource fair.
And all of the pictures in this slideshow are actual students from last week and today, so know that. While we're sharing fun stories, I sent Tamara out to go take pictures of kindergartners today. It was their first day. And she asked one kindergartner, are you so excited to start kindergarten? He said, well, I don't know about kindergarten, but I am going to be an astronaut for Halloween. So I'm going to talk about the back to school resource fair. This was the second year. We have held this at Park Place Middle School. It is a district-wide event for all families. We have held it for other years prior to this, but we called it Philiform Night and it was at Frank Wagner Elementary. And a lot of families didn't know that it was open to all families district-wide. The original intent was to invite families in and to help them get forms filled out for the year. So their free introduced lunch applications and their volunteer applications. A couple of years ago, we rebranded it to make it more inclusive of everyone in the district. We moved locations. And we really communicated to all our families what it was and what it was for. So this was the second year we held it. It was a huge success. We estimate we had about a thousand people come through the door at Park Place. It was two hours. At the very end of August and we had a ton of community partners providing resources for our families. So in addition to helping people fill out their forms, get enrolled, sign up for transportation, we also gave away resources to help them start off the year. Prepared and ready. So the foundation in partnership with Big Heart Big Smile gave away four hundred, over four hundred backpacks. That were filled with school supplies. The Monroe Public Schools Foundation gave away over two hundred and fifty pairs of Converse shoes and they partnered with Walmart and some other donors to get those shoes. Which was a huge task to get all those sizes and kids fitted and hand those out. There were school supplies handed out, the Snow Isle Libraries handed out books, the fire department fitted kids with helmets. You can see a picture of the lone firefighter there was fitting kids for helmets and he was dripping sweat. It was a very hot day, but he got them all fitted. David gave over nine hundred COVID test, almost two thousand COVID tests out. They were like the hot item of the night. We could not hand them out fast enough. Oxbow Farms gave out fresh produce and many, many more resources were handed out. So it was a great event and. We're hopeful to keep building on it year after year.
Thank you, Erin. Chris Cronus, can you talk to us about elementary?
Hi folks. Yes, love to. We had a great start. It was, it was so much fun. I was at Frank Wagner the first, on the first day in the morning. And they, the staff just did an absolutely amazing job welcoming kids. And managing the, the playground to help kids get to where they need to be so they could find their teacher and then the teachers walk them into the building. Class by class and then, you know, you get a couple straggles there. We were able to grab, you know, gather them up and make sure they got to the right places. So. They did a phenomenal job and overall we keep hearing the same thing from all the elementary schools and there's this buzz in the air before school started this year. Teachers are excited, the staff is excited and it got off to a great start. Overall, there seems to be a theme among all five schools around growing together and working together and collaborating together. They're setting up systems for the teachers to collaborate more effectively. We have a lot of new staff, which I'm sure Dan's going to talk about in a minute. At each of our buildings, ten new staff chain, we had fourteen new certificate staff at Frank. See, eight new staff at Maltby, so, and fifteen new staff at Salem. So there's been a lot of, a lot of change in our schools. And folks are just excited. I've, I've been out a few times now and it's, it's fun to be there, see the kids and how they're doing. So it's a, one of the things I think I walked away with from last week was just. How important it is for us to be together, to learn together and grow together. And, and it was just this recurring theme everywhere I went, every, every school I went to and. You know, I was in a, I was at Salem and I popped into one of our high needs classrooms and, you know, a couple of kids recognized and came over and gave me a hug. And it was really sweet and it's those kinds of moments that you simply can't get any other way, you know, you've got to be there a person with kids and working with them. And it's been just a really exciting, fun start.
Thank you. So the last few years have not been easy and kids have had different experiences. Some of them pretty tough. And so what we wanted to do was think about how we were going to launch this year to be positive. To be really nurturing and to be fun as well. We wanted kids to come to school and enjoy being there. So our goal in secondary for the start of the school year was to create a welcoming environment. And each of our schools has done something to ensure that students, staff and families had an opportunity to build relationships with one another. And to understand the expectations for school. We wanted to do that in a really nice, thoughtful way. Sky Valley, of course, has not started yet, but they've been getting together and they've had four. Orientation sessions with over six hundred families where they learned about the requirements, they learned about their opportunities that they had for learning. And other sessions to support parents because parents are very responsible for their students' learning and there's some, there's some tricks to the trade from that. I think Molly could probably. Speak to that. They're, it's, it's not easy to be an educator, even if you're your child's first teacher. Leaders and learning, we have a brand new principal there, Tina Vinick, and they've had two orientations for families and students. And she estimates that they had about eighty percent of the families and this is where they came in and they, they again talked about all of the opportunities that they have through leaders and learning. And to make sure that everybody was starting the year with what they needed. Park Place and Hidden River have done a really nice job of collaborating to make sure that they're aligned on those areas that they need to be aligned. But recognizing that they have different populations and some different needs. Both schools started with a sixth grade orientation and that was really crucial to setting up incoming students with the skills to do secondary. Elementary is a little bit different than secondary. Christie estimated that like ninety percent of the sixth graders that attended Park Place Middle School. Ninety percent of the Park Place Middle School sixth graders attended this session. And there was an assembly. We also have web in middle school where it's where everybody belongs and it's a really great mentoring program where the eighth graders. Get some really great training to mentor incoming sixth graders. High school does that as well. It's Link Crew. So that was really a lot of fun. On the seventh of September, seventh and eighth graders were welcome and all students started with a community circle during connection time. So this is again, giving kids an opportunity just, just to sit and be and to have a conversation with one another and to learn more about each other and to build those relationships. I think some of my, some of my funnest times have been. Participating, observing and watching and hearing more about the high school launch. It was called Bearcat Launch. So on Wednesday, they had the ninth and the tenth graders come. Ninth graders were in the morning, tenth graders were in the afternoon. And then on Thursday, it was eleventh grader in the morning and twelfth grade in the afternoon. And this was an opportunity again for the classes to get to know each other, to learn the building, but also do a little bit of a restart, like what are our expectations? And twelfth graders have a little bit of a different, you know, pattern in high school than a ninth grader does. So that was a really nice opportunity for them. And of course, ninth graders had twelfth grade mentors for Link Crew. Friday was really, really cool. They had ninth, tenth and eleventh and twelfth graders there and they wanted to provide a learning experience. But they wanted it to be fun and a little bit non-traditional. Some of the courses that they offered were adventure sports, bikes and boards. Bearcat Spirit One-on-One. They had to learn like the songs and know more about Benny the Bearcat, how he rocks the house and all of that. Crystals and gemstones. We have a, a parent who said that their child was really excited about that and came home after half day. It's like my brain really hurts and she was like, oh buddy, half day. Okay, but so that was, that was, that was fun. Kids, kids were learning a lot. Do-it-yourself stickers, origami, Mandarin, and I think a student came up afterwards and said, we need to start a Mandarin club. So again, there's just a whole list of really cool, creative things that teachers did with kids that we're already seeing is going to carry forward. Throughout the year. Some celebrations. Students and staff were happy, engaged and connecting with each other. A ninth grader explained at the end of the first day, I know people now. One staff member reported that this was the least stress she has ever felt at the start of the year. Every staff member from office, custodial, para and teacher were engaged and exciting. So we're really excited to see where this goes. We had an opportunity for parents to come in and it was mostly new parents. New to the district and our ninth grade parents came in and had a chance to meet with counselors and staff and do that. We're going to evaluate how this went for everybody, for students, staff and families, but we expect to be able to continue to evolve this. So that we have a start to the year that's joyful, but is also setting us up for success for the rest of the year.
And for special education, I, I am on the docket, I believe, for the next board meeting to do a more in-depth. Special Education Board Report. So I encourage, if you have any information that you want specific information on, other than the stuff that I usually bring. Please reach out to Dr. Larson and I'll make sure that I prepare that so it meets your needs as far as information that you want. So it's a relevant board report. I have ideas, but if you have special things that you want, that'd be great. But just kind of a real brief overview as far as the start of the school year. Seven hundred, started the year with seven hundred and eighty-seven students on IPs. So it's about consistent with what we've had in previous years and it comes out to about thirteen point seven percent of our population. So it's, it's a good pop. It's, it's a good representation across the district. Had a couple of program moves this year. We moved initially as, as because of space issues at Frank Wagner, but it really worked out well. Our developmental preschool classes, our three developmental preschool classes, we relocated from. Frank Wagner Elementary to Brieland's Elementary and now they're together with the Transitional Kindergarten Program. Which creates additional inclusion opportunities for them instead of having to go from. Half-day at Transitional Kindergarten and then over to the Frank Wagner for the second half of their special education day. They're able to have their full day at Brieland's Elementary and those folks, those kids will be starting their programming on Wednesday. One of the reasons they start a little bit later is our preschool teachers and their parent educators. And it's kind of become a tradition now. They spend the first two days of kindergarteners, of kindergarten, so. Today and tomorrow and our, our preschool teachers who had a lot of these kids last year. Helped those kids with that transition into kindergarten. So some of those kids need a little bit more help and a leg up and they, they're in there because they know. What's going to make them be successful. So that's, that's, that's always been a successful launch. We've added a new structured learning center program at Salem Woods and that's just a factor of our increasing numbers with. A population of students that we have. One of the things, and I put it in, as far as I described a quote, diversity is a fact, but inclusion is a choice we make every day. And I just wanted to give a quick example at one of our schools. I was out in the buildings on Thursday and I was, I was, had a team meeting and then I was going into a couple of classrooms. And I walked into one of our specialized high, high need classrooms. That previously it was really a big challenge to have those students included in their general education classrooms. And so this is day number two and I walked into the classroom and the teacher was in there with two kids and I said, oh, where is everybody? And they were already in their, in the general education classrooms with, with parent educator support, but. And they were already in their cla- in the general education classrooms, um, with, with parent educator support, but those kids are, are getting that opportunity right away. And that from the time over the last seven, seven years I've been in the district is a tremendous change. And it, and it's because that inclusion is a choice we make every day and that's a choice that our building principals have all made. Um, all of our special education staff have made and our general education staff. And it's really, it's taking hold. It's the culture from elementary to middle to high school. Um, last year Brett Willie did a monumental, just complete re-hall of the master schedule, um, at the high school and that staff embraced it. And those students are now in their general education classrooms, the vast majority of their day. And that's a point where our district is ahead of the curve in that area. So that's a, a point of pride, I think, for the district and all of our, our buildings, our staff, and I mean, from top down to the parent educators, um, everybody is doing that supportive students. Um, we didn't talk a lot about what we were gonna talk about up here. Um, but one of the things that's coming through and I, and I mentioned it to Director Campbell on the, before the meeting, it just feels better in the buildings this year. You, you could feel it. You talk to people. We've been under a lot, a lot of stress for the last two and a half years and you could just feel it's like the weight is coming off. And it's like, it's, it's, it's fun to be in school again. It's like people are smiling, they're joking, you know, the kids are happy. They're not wearing, having to wear masks. I think that makes a a large difference for a lot, especially for some of our younger learners. But it just, it feels good again. And I think there's just a renewed sense of optimism across the district. I filled in the district office and I filled in the buildings and in the, in the mil- meetings I'm leading. Uh, that's all I have on special education. You wanna go to, have just a couple of quick health services updates. Um, and just a, a lot of our, um, this is just kind of, I was almost not gonna talk about COVID because I don't wanna talk about it anymore, but just a couple of, of real small things. Um, a lot of our protocols are pretty similar to last year. Um, with the numbers going down, the requirements are becoming less and less. Um, and it's, and it's, it's just, we've just kind of evolving into, we're gonna live with COVID. People are gonna get COVID. We're gonna make sure we address it um, carefully and, and prevent the spread as much as possible, but it's gonna be something that we're dealing with on an ongoing basis. Um, just, but a couple of just real small changes that we have. Um, at the end of last year with volunteers, we were able to move and get all of our vol- get volunteers back into the classrooms. Um, but last year, because the numbers were still pretty high, um, we were holding a line that except, uh, vaccine exemptions weren't, weren't allowed for volunteers. So we've changed that this year. So if our, if our parents and, and community members want to volunteer and, and they have a medical or religious exemption, they're able to attest to that, uh, uh, exemption and then, um, be able to volunteer in our classroom. So really trying to be, um, sensitive to the need that our families wanna be in the classrooms and we're trying to make every opportunity for them to be in. They do need, we do ask them to attest also that if they're not feeling well, that they stay home. We don't want that, you know, we wanna make sure that our, our kids and staff are, are safe at all times. Um, other, uh, the thing, uh, that is ongoing, so continuing to have optional testing for our staff and students. Um, and as Aaron said, we, we were able to give out almost two thousand test for our community at the resource fair. Um, the supply is great and learn to return. They want us to, to get those out to the community. We, we, we gave away almost two thousand, um, one day and the next day I made an order and had that another shipment within a couple of days. So the supply is there. So we're able to continue that, um, for us, for our staff and students. Um, the other change, and this is just kind of a, we're, we're not required, um, anymore to give that the notifications for every single, um, COVID experience that we have in our schools. So, so we are, um, doing our weekly notifications every Friday at the end of day where, um, community members, staff can, can log on to our COVID tracker and get a, get a, get a, 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 up-to-date, um, live, um, picture of how many positive cases were at, in their building. So, um, so that is all I have for right now.
David, before you pass the mic on, I do have a question about volunteers. Um, just because so many changes have happened. If we have parents or community members who want to volunteer, the first, best first step is that to contact the office of the school that they're asking to want, or they need to call, contact the district office?
Um, there is actually a link on the website where there's the volunteer, um, packet and then they just fill that out. It's a, it's a almost instant background check that comes back. Um, and then it's the, the only other piece is, um, the, 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 the vaccinate, um, verification of the vaccine status. And so then they, they select what is, what is appropriate for their, their circumstance.
Thank you.
Quick question, David. Uh, you said seven hundred and eighty, uh, with IEPs. So does that basically under special education, is that a, is that a number for that? I know you could have a variety of circumstances. Is that a way to look at that?
Yeah, seven hundred and eighty-seven would be encompassing of all the federal special education classifications. Um, and so that, that, that could include students with a specific learning disability. It could include students with communication disabilities. So all, all levels of disabilities. This is separate than our, our kids that also have disabilities that are under, identified under section five oh four, um, which is a little, it's a little bit different. It's just, um, but it's also another, uh, program for students, um, with disabilities.
I also wanna thank you for our little office outbreaks that we've had helping me to navigate the the tracking, the COVID tracking. It's eight people. Uh, but it's, it's been a challenge. So I just sent David an email, how do I approach this and what's the, what's the protocol? There's state, county, all over the place. So thank you for that publicly. I thank you for that.
Yeah. Well, and, and, and Director Welford, I'll just say, if, if recognizing how difficult it is to track for those eight employees, think about of all, all of our building principals and nurses and health assistance and office managers last year that were trying to manage that with, in an elementary school with four hundred students and, and thirty staff and trying to track all of those states. That tracking, that, that was a big response. That, that was a big factor of an incredible amount of stress that folks had. And that's where taking some of that, those requirements away, I think is allowing our building principals again, to really be really reinvigorated with the work that's important, which is teaching our students. So I think it's gonna be a real year of growth. But to those points, Director Welford, if you have questions that you'd like me to kind of add slides for my, my presentation or questions, I could, I can develop, you know, some, some additional things. But there's special education, you could go as deep as you want or as, as thirty thousand level. And so.
I would make a comment. You have those numbers involved. Of those eight, some are very specific and kind of drive me nuts about, uh, well, that's the school, but what about this? And so taking that as a factor of ten, with the various variables you deal with, that must have been just quite a feat. So thank you for navigating the school district through that.
You're welcome. And it's, when you look at it from where we started and to where we're now, it's, I don't know how we got through it, but we got through it. We're, we're all resilient.
Hi again. So I'm speaking on behalf of, uh, Victor, who couldn't be here tonight. He stepped away. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of, of an update on, uh, transportation technology and safety and security. Um, so a little while ago, uh, Kim had mentioned, uh, the total number of riders we have in our buses. Um, we've seen a pretty dramatic increase compared with previous school years. It's a lot to do with COVID. We're fewer kindergartners here. So we're seeing the numbers come back to our district. Um, and, uh, uh, one of the things I appreciate about the transportation department is that if you give them a problem to solve, they will solve it. They're pretty amazing. I, I don't know how Mike Birch does it, but he always figures that away. And, uh, so for example, the drivers ran double routes on Wednesday, Thursday for Bear Cat Launch at the high school. Um, and alone over the Labor Day weekend, they enrolled another, uh, enrolled, they, they added a hundred and eighty more. I hate, her name and I more kids to route. So it's pretty extraordinary what they're able to accomplish very little time and they do it just impossibly well. So big, big thanks to them. Um, as far as, uh, technology, another huge lift on the part of, uh, Keith Welton and his team. Um, we, uh, we deployed about five hundred Chromebooks, uh, to the new six through twelve students. Um, the collaboration with digital learning, uh, to secure a, a digital equity grant through SPI for about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which is huge. Um, and they were, uh, uh, another big lift that they did was just preparing schools for carts, with carts. Uh, it takes a long time and a lot of work and effort to, um, uh, sunset all tech and bring new tech in. And we, one of the guys who works, it's kind of all he does all day long. He just keeps working on this one project and they knocked it all out. Uh, so another huge lift and a big thanks to our technology department to help get our schools and our kids prepared for the school year. Um, safety, security is a little short. Or, so, um, we were able to hire a couple of new security specialists and, uh, set up some new traffic patterns at high school, make it a little safer for everybody up there. Yeah, um, apparently Dr. Larson had a bit of trouble getting through the parking lot, but it worked out. She's here.
All right, uh, our human resources report, we had a lot of new hires, uh, this year, sixty-one, and that's, uh, sixty-one and counting because we're still bringing some folks in uh, with some, some late shifting. Uh, twenty-four of those were teachers and then we've got some office professionals, sub-seventh new substitutes. And a lot of those, uh, just the last few days, we've got a new sub-coordinator. And, uh, she's working hard on, on processing those application good notes, folks in. Uh, we need a lot more, but, but, um, but that's a, that's a nice start. So uh, athletic coaches, parent educators, administrators, some of us are in the room, uh, those four. Uh, we've got some counselors, student support specialists, three bus drivers, uh, bus driver trainees right now, but they'll turn into bus drivers. And then the two security team members and a technology specialist. The, it's really been fun this week. Uh, the last time I saw a lot of these folks, when you, you know, you spend the summer, you're looking through references, you're checking resumes, uh, working with hiring managers to try to make sure we get the best people in the district that we can for our kids. Last time I saw a lot of these folks was at the end of their fourth straight day of training. So you can imagine, in fact, it was in this room. They're pretty tired and some, some eyelids are looking heavy. Uh, but to get out in schools, uh, this last week and to see them in action and doing their thing and the energy's there, they're connecting with kids, um, really is affirming that we've made some good choices. So I'm excited about our new crop of folks. Uh, the teacher, uh, Dr. Larson was mentioning, um, you know, I left her class thinking, I wanna stay here today. I don't, I don't wanna go back. The kids are, kids are there, they're third graders, they're getting ready for their lesson. And she says, she says, all right, everybody get in your favorite position. So the kids are, they're laying back, they're on the ground, laying, just propping their feet up and then, okay, everybody set? Yeah, they're set, they respond. And then they get into their lesson. And I thought they're gonna keep rolling around. Nope, they stayed. They, they looked at her energy and her, her lead and they, they got to do, got to move, got to get set. Uh, just good stuff, good, good moves from our new staff. And we saw that all around. Um, all that climate, uh, walking through buildings with principals. Um, I don't wanna steal, uh, Brenda's thumb, thunder, but checking, uh, class sizes and where we're at. I think she was, she was really close on her, uh, enrollment projection. You'll see that in a bit. I won't, I won't take her numbers, but but that's a big deal. Um, getting those things right, making sure we're staffed appropriately. Uh, making sure we have appropriate classes. There's a few things to, to tweak here and there that we're still working on, uh, balancing. But really solid start to the school year with our, our new staff members, um, and their locations. Um, last thing I did wanna mention, uh, we do have, um, we, we got a couple of positions we're still trying to fill. Uh, we've got some strategies where we're trying to recruit, um, some hard to fill positions. Um, and we'll get there. Uh, we also have five new student teachers in the district, which, uh, we definitely, that's one of our strategies as an HR department, we wanna increase our internships. We wanna, we wanna be part of, uh, creating, uh, successful new teachers and be part of their educational process.
So we started the presentation with numbers and we're ending the presentation with numbers. Um, today was count day. And so today are, are the initial numbers for our K-12 traditional buildings. As had previously been said, Sky Valley has not yet reported. They have not yet started. And, um, this doesn't include leaders of learning or out of district special education. And so in our traditional buildings, the strategy was to use our typical historical roll-ups and, uh, cohorts that, um, we historically have had excluding the COVID years. And, um, it resulted in a budget of roughly sixty-one more students than what we had in January. And so that four thousand five hundred and ninety represents sixty-one more students than we had enrolled in January of twenty-two. Um, our actual enrollment as of today is four thousand five hundred and ninety-one point one nine, which is one point one nine off of what we had projected for our budget. So.
Are you buying a lottery ticket on the way home?
Where do you keep your crystal ball? Seriously. I'm sorry, everyone. I was off by forty-seven cents in my budget for projections. Very impressive.
It's, it's, um, it's just luck. It's just, it's just luck.
Brenda, I wanna just say publicly, thank you for, I mean, our whole team. You guys are amazing, but just as you're talking about this, the, the, how you're helping us navigate a very tumultuous time with finances and projections and stuff like that, you have, it, it is, it boggles the mind. It is not luck and we just appreciate that. We appreciate all of you guys because you, you give a hundred and fifty percent and it, it's just awesome to see that. And I feel the same energy. I'm very excited. Our kids, and what your kids say, I haven't talked about it, Molly, but just, it was a different school year to begin to kick it off. I mean, and we were at the bus stop today with Michaela's bus to get on for Chain Lake. And she's excited and she's a third grader and they're buddies with one of the kindergarten classes. And there's a kindergarten getting ready for his first day of school. And he is like, ready to jump out of his skin. He was so excited. And, and you know, she, my wife and his mom are talking and, you know, she's gonna go lead him to his classroom because she knows where it's at. He's in my wife's old classroom. And so, you know, my daughter knows right where it's at. I just, but the energy there, all the kids, there's about four kids at our bus stop and they were just, this, this last week has been amazing. And you can feel that, which is very exciting. So thank you guys, your teams. This is great.
Brenda? So with the, with, with Sky Valley Education not coming on board and not having the numbers, so you have forty-five ninety-one. Forget the points. And then, uh, but earlier it said we have fifty, five thousand three hundred and twelve and you had six hundred with Sky Valley. So are those, is an estimate included?
This is FTE and the numbers that you had previously with headcount. Now for elementary schools, FTE typically is the same as a headcount at the elementary schools. However, that slowly changes between seventh and twelfth grade. So you might have a student, for example, at the high school that has two classes. So they would be point three-three FTE. So there is a fluctuation, a variance between FTE and headcount at the secondary school primarily. And we see that at Sky Valley as well. Once we start looking at their enrollment, typically their headcount is higher than their FTE. Unfortunately, we are funded not by the number of students that are in the class, but by the time that they spend in the classroom.
And I did know that from prior explanations. What, what about the number of staff? So we have nine hundred and sixty-seven. So are the teachers at Sky Valley gonna be added to that? Are they currently included? It's just.
That number includes the Sky Valley teachers, it includes all the employees and, and all Sky Valley employees. It also includes our substitutes.
Okay. Thank you. I got a question since my mic's on. Uh, are we at two, the esteemed panel? Uh, last year I went to a, uh, I don't know, it was a race-related class at Park Place. And, uh, Christie Hill said, Hillstead said that that was the first assembly they've had in two years. Are we gonna have assemblies? Are we gonna have a sis boom ba? Get together, get excited, speakers, sports? Fabulous. Fabulous.
We've already had a lot of
We've already had a lot of assemblies. They're learning all of the traditions. And I, I don't know if you, Nathan, want to talk about the assemblies?
Sure. Yeah, we've had tons of assemblies. They did, well, a decent amount. Today was my fourth first day, so. We had, yeah, but they were, they weren't too long. The principals did a good job of that. And just went around, did tons of spirit activities. I don't know if you want the whole report and everything, but Faircat Launch was a blast. And we learned tons of stuff. We even had a pep rally at the high school. Like literally Martin Waldrop, our, my sports event instructor. They chose him because he's just absolutely insane and awesome. He led our whole school in a pep rally, got us all hyped and the band was there, we played. It was awesome. I mean, obviously there's some students who don't really like pep assemblies and stuff, but I thought it was really fun. And most students thought, thought so too. And the energy there was great. It was absolutely awesome.
It's really encouraging to hear, I think, just creating good momentum for our school year, for our staff, for our students. It's an important thing that I think that us just starting the year and then trying to build that momentum. If you take a few days to make that happen, I think it pays off in dividends to be able to actually launch the school year. Appreciate that. That's exciting. If you want to go hang out, I think we need to have Erin stick around for Parent Square. I'm getting emails, Erin. You guys getting emails for Parent Square? No? Oh, yes, because you're not starting. That'll be agenda item 5.02 and you have a presentation on our new app.
Well, hello again. You all know who I am, but for our audience members who don't, I am Erin Zakarta and I am the Director of Communications for the District. Hopefully, most of you on our board have heard about Parent Square. I'm here to briefly describe it to you as board directors and talk about why we are using it and what exactly. Okay, so let's start with the background. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So background information, for years we were using a school or a tool called School Messenger. And it was our only mass communication tool that we used to send out district-wide emails, text messages and robocalls. And those were for district-wide communication and school-wide communication. And if we were doing to like a grade level. The communications department, the two of us in the communications department were the only two, in addition to the transportation department that had access to it. So we sent out every single message that went out to families. As you can imagine, that created kind of a bottleneck when people needed messages to go out urgently. And we had a lot of other things or emergencies going on. We were never really satisfied with the, with the platform. It was something we inherited when we started here. And we didn't have a say into what platform we were using. We just started using it because that's what we had. We had a lot of issues with it for a variety of reasons. It was very clunky and not user-friendly, which is why we never really rolled it out to our schools. We didn't want to add one more thing on their plate that they had to do and they had to learn, especially during COVID times. So we just continued to manage that for them. It only translated into Spanish. So emails, text messages, robocalls were translated into Spanish. We did not have the option to do any other languages. It was English or Spanish. That was it. Text messages that we sent through School Messenger were opt-in, so families had to sign up to get text messages. So it was not an opt-out. So meaning you would get them and then if you didn't want them, then you would say stop, unsubscribe. So you can imagine, we didn't have a lot of families signing up to get text messages. So it wasn't a super effective communication tool. So to help bridge that gap that we had with School Messenger, last year we added on Talking Points, which is a text messaging service that staff could use to text message with families. And it did offer the translation piece. So a teacher could text message a family in English. They would receive it in whatever language was their home language in Skyward, our student information system. And then they could respond back in their native language and the teacher would receive it in English. So provided a way for two-way communication in a language that families could understand. However, there were issues with that system as well. For starters, it was very costly. It was about just over $31,000 just for the text messaging system. In addition to what we were paying for School Messenger as well. We had continual issues with the data sync. So all of our student information is in Skyward. That's all of our family contact information and we need the systems to talk to one another. So all of that information needs to sync with whatever system we use so that when there's updates, it syncs in that system. Well, we spent months and months trying to get it to them to talk to one another and they never worked quite right. What Talking Points would do, it was, it would pull phone number one from Skyward. That might be a landline, it might be mom's phone number, it might be dad's phone number, but that's all it would text message. And we tried and tried to have Band-Aids to fix it and it, it just didn't work properly. It was great for those families that was reaching, but it was not reaching all of our families. So we knew we needed a different platform and we knew there had to be a better solution that, that fixed all these issues we were having. And then in the spring, we did a family communication survey. I'll go into that in another presentation a, at another time with the results of that were. But some of the insights that we gleaned from that were that families felt like they were getting too much communication from too many different places. It's a lot to manage. And those of you that are parents, you probably feel that too. I know I have three middle school kids and with six teachers, that's six teachers times three kids sending emails, the school sending emails. There's newsletters, the district sending emails, Summer and Family Access, Summer or Text Message. It's just a lot. And it's a lot for families to manage and read at the end of the day when they've already had their job and the sports and all the things. Another piece of information we gleaned from the communication survey was that families trust the communication they receive from teachers the most over what they receive from schools and what they receive from the district. So we, we knew we needed to provide a better tool for our teachers to effectively engage with families because that's what families trust the most. So next slide, please. Thank you for, for managing that. I can't talk and click at the same time. So appreciate that. Another piece of information that, that we got from the communication survey was that it confirmed that our families prefer email and text messages for almost all types of communication. So again, that affirmed that we needed to provide a better tool for our, all of our staff to engage in these ways with our families because that's what they're looking for. We were already doing a great job of sending a lot of emails. But back to the point I made earlier about School Messenger, only the messages that Tamara and I in the communications department were sending out through School Messenger were being translated into Spanish. The emails that our teaching staff were sending out through Family Access or through their district email, most likely were not translated. They were in English only because they didn't have the tool to do that unless they used Google Translate or something to translate their own emails. So we knew we needed a better tool to provide translations for our staff to do email and text messages and reach all of our families. Next slide, please. So in an effort to find a better solution to solve all of these issues, we partnered with Keith, our Director of our Technology Services, and Melissa Bowden, who is our Director of our Student Information System. And we talked about what our goals would be in finding a new communication system to address these problems. So we were looking for something that consolidated all the platforms into one and streamlines communications for our families. We wanted something that offers two-way translation in more than just Spanish. So we know there's a variety of languages spoken in our district and we want to be able to reach all the families, no matter what language they speak. We wanted an interface that's user-friendly so that if we roll it out to all of our staff, it's not something that's going to be super cumbersome for them to learn and use. We also wanted a mobile app feature, which we have, it's something we've wanted for a while because a lot of families want one place where they can go to find all the information. I want to go to this app and find all the information in one place. I don't want to have to go to the website and my email and hunt for all the information I need. If we wanted to add an app with our previous systems, that would have been another add-on through a different system and an additional cost. So we wanted to find a service that, that included that into its overall service. We wanted to reduce cost. Most importantly, we wanted to find something that would sync properly with Skyward so that everything is streamlined and up to date as we need it. And eventually we wanted something that would address our need for student communication. So right now our staff, our teachers, our coaches, they can email our students. Students most often don't check their email. They use their phone for text messages and apps. So we wanted something to help bridge that gap down the road when we were ready for it. In a safe and above-board way that's archived with all our, our procedures and compliance requirements. So we spent months after we set our goals demoing all the different products that are out there. We looked at just about every single mass communication system that is available for public education. We talked to all local districts. What do you use? What is working well for you? What's not working well? And what we landed on eventually was Parent Square. A lot of our neighboring districts are also using it, have recently added it or are in the process of adding it and had wonderful things to say about it. It also met all of the goals we had set out. So we were really excited when we found that. And I'm, next slide, I'm going to show you a brief video overview of what it is. It's only two minutes.
Parents are busy and they're getting school information from everywhere. Teacher apps, school texts, email newsletters, district calls, backpack flyers. Too many methods, too many places to look. Schools don't know if they're getting through all this clutter and noise. Who is saying what? If family contact information is current, then who's not being reached? Wouldn't it be better if everything was in one place? So you and your families could be sure nothing and no one is missed? It's time to get organized, to get unified. Welcome to Parent Square. Parent Square unifies family communications from the district office to the classroom, all in a single platform. From district-wide alerts to individual parent-teacher messages. Parent Square's communications tools are built to work together, not piece together. Staff have to learn only one system. Parents find everything in one account. It's more than messages. It's also school services that rely on two-way communications, like filling out forms, scheduling conferences, excusing absences and responding to progress reports. All fully integrated so parents can reply by web or app and miss nothing. Administrators also miss nothing. Usage and participation reports let them know who's not being reached and help improve communications equity. And they can trust contacts and messages will stay private and secure. Schools also increase engagement and family connections with Parent Square's unique ability to verify and flag updates to contact details. Parents can pick preferred ways of being reached and use any of their phone numbers or email addresses to log in. That gives parents control and schools confidence important messages make it through. With Parent Square, schools get a unified communications platform that saves time. They stay in touch with families easily and consistently. Parents have just one login account to find information and communicate with schools and teachers. They're more satisfied and involved. Parent Square, all of your family interactions in one place.
So that is the brief overview of what it is. One of the features I like best about it is that you can set your communication preferences as a parent. So if you want to get email, text message alerts immediately, you can set that. Or if you want a daily digest at 6:00 PM, you can set that. So you get it all at one time. You can also go in there, if you activate your account as a parent, which is optional. You can set what your preferred method of communication is. If you prefer to get it all in texts, you can set that or email. You can also, it pulls in whatever a family's home language is identified in Skyward, but they can also change that as they want in Family Act or in a Parent Square. To make those changes though, they do have to activate their account, which is optional. If a family does not activate their account, they still will get all the emails and text messages. They just won't have the capability to go in and customize how and when they receive things. Next slide, please. As you can imagine, a system this robust, and I only described the tip of it. It can do all sorts of things from calendar reminders to forms and conference sign-ups, a whole lot of other things that we will get to eventually. Right now, we're just starting with the basics. So how we are doing the rollout is we spent most of August getting the data from Skyward synced properly, which was a much bigger task than we had anticipated. A huge shout out to Melissa Bowden, our Director of our Student Information System, who spent days upon days on the technical side of things, making sure it was all synced and organizing properly. And she had to set up all the exports and imports from Skyward, which I don't even understand how that works, but she did a fabulous job of doing that. And then the communications department went through training. And then later in August, we trained all of our school administrators and office managers on using it. They will be expected to use it for all school-level communication and we will be using it for all district-level communication. It will be optional for our teaching staff to use. We are hoping that as more and more teachers use it, it will grow, it will grow organically once they hear how amazing it is. It has been introduced to them through email. We've provided optional training. They can do, go at your own pace online. There's webinars and the communications department will be providing in-person training opportunities throughout the year so that if people aren't ready to use it now, they can get trained on using it later in the year, whenever they are ready to use it. It has also been introduced to parents. Hopefully you got the email in the introduction and the optional information about signing up for, registering your account. I think that's all I wanted to say about that. We are having a few growing pains as you would expect with any launch of a new, a new system. One of those is that Sky Valley Education Center uses a system for their, to assign students to classes other than Skyward. So all Sky Valley families are in there, but the teachers are not assigned to classes like our, our more traditional schools. So that is something we will be working to get resolved as we learn more about that. Sky Valley can use it as a school to send out communication, just our teachers can't use it yet until we get all that data synced properly, which we are hoping to get resolved in the next couple of weeks. We have already heard great feedback from many of our staff members and families who are using it. In the last week, we have sent out 603 direct messages, 60 posts. Almost 800 parents have downloaded the app. I sent out our first district-wide email on Friday through Parent Square. And when I do, I can see how many languages it's going out in. It went out in over 20 languages. The most common after Spanish was Telugu. I don't know if I'm saying that right. Russian, Ukrainian, Vietnamese, Hmong. Those were languages that were, people were not getting communication before in those languages. So 20 other languages other than Spanish were sent out, which was awesome. We are saving just about $16,000 annually in combining services. I heard from Carlos Az today. He's our Hispanic liaison. He was in one of our school offices. He didn't say which one. I think it was Park Place. But he had a parent come in who speaks Ukrainian. She spoke zero English and needed to communicate with the office staff. So he took his phone, showed her how to get hooked up with Parent Square. And he was able to stand there and talk back and forth with her through the Parent Square app, which would not have been possible without that. So we are hearing great things. We're really excited about it and hopeful that it's going to solve a lot of problems and help us engage with families in a more equitable way that works best for them. Any questions?
Just want to say to you, 801 downloads. I just downloaded it and logged in and got it all set up in the time that it took to do the video.
Awesome.
So it's pretty, it's pretty simple, which is great, which is important, I think, for all families. Because even if English is your, your primary language, it doesn't mean that figuring it all out. And to be perfectly honest, I've been waiting just on the emails and I was like, I'm going to wait to see if I need to download one more thing for the school district. And so I'm like, actually going, okay, this is, this is legit. And then when I was researching a little bit, the behind-the-scenes translator tool, which my language brain gets a little nerdy about. I'm like, okay, what, what software are you using? And it is actually Google Translate that's doing it. And by the way, Google Translate is 97% accurate with Spanish. It is fun as a Spanish teacher because I know what my students use it. I'm like, haha, that's not what it actually said. But it's pretty, it's pretty being close with a lot of fun things. And I was interested to, it was a common language I had in my classroom in, in North Shore District, which is a, one of the many languages of India. And it has like an 84% accuracy rate, which is still pretty high. And linguistically, very, very, very different than, than English. And so knowing that everything may not be perfect, it's probably enough to get the most important information in family's hands, which is, which is a huge deal. So this is exciting.
It's cool. I've got it too. And it was really easy. And for any parents who got the email about it and then got really busy and didn't quite get to clicking on it, you can still go in and it'll, it'll send you a new link to be able to. you can still go in and it'll, it'll send you a new link to be able to register your account. So don't fear.
And you don't have to download the app to change it. If you register your account, you can use the online browser or the app. You don't have, if you're not wanting to download the app, that's optional feature.
My comment, sounds like a win.
Agreed.
All right. I downloaded it too during the board meeting. It was super easy. It didn't take much time, although it wants me to confirm my district email and not my personal one, so I'll have to change that. But super easy. I am absolutely loving this. I love the fact that it saves over $16,000. I mean, those are the type of things that we need right now um with the levy where it's at. And it's a lot more user friendly and it's going to do a lot more of what it seems like we needed to do. So um, yeah, exactly. More bang for your buck, so to speak. So yeah, thank you so much for all your hard work and putting this together, figuring it out and getting after it. This is awesome. Thank you.
All right. Section six, business item 6.01. Thank you, Erin, for all of that. Appreciate you. Um, 6.01, our business items, consideration of certificated sub-rate pay of change. The uh, parents, sorry, I'm with you. I think did not update. Here we go. Um, request for subrates for certified staff based on the rate of $205 is the same as we paid in June of 2022. Preferred rate of, uh, the preferred rate after 30 days is 235, which is an increase of $15 over June of 2022. The memorandum of agreement also offers immediate access to the $235 rate for those emergency substitutes who already worked regularly for us. And these are most typically parent educators who hold emergency substitute certificates. The goal of these pay increases is also to minimize unfilled teacher vacancies as those are a drain in our system and are more costly than the proposed plan. Following, the following consideration of sub-rate pay is presented for your review. The memorandum of agreement increase substitute rates for all certificate staff. I think that it's also uh a great thing, knowing, Dan, we have seven new substitutes in the district, which is, it just makes me feel like we can breathe. I know we still have a big need, but I think doing this, one validates the huge need that it is, but it also attracts other substitutes uh in high quality as well. So is there a motion to, for this agenda item?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the increase in subrates for certificated staff.
Second. Second, is there discussion? On favor, raise your hand. Host, all right, motion passes four to zero. Moving on to item 6.02. Consideration of custodian bus driver and parent educator sub-rate pay of change as well. And also two, uh, rates of pay will increase by 6% with the following exceptions. Custodian substitutes hourly rate of pay will increase from $19.66 to 24. Bus driver substitute hourly rates of pay will increase from $20.59 to 23 during their first 20 days of service and from 2109 to 2350, beginning with their, their 21st day of service. And parent educator substitutes, parent educator substitutes hourly rates of pay will increase from $16.54 to $20.50. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the bus driver, custodian and parent educator sub-rate of pay change.
So a second.
Second.
So discussion. All right, seeing that the consideration of custodian bus drivers and parent educator subrates of pay has been motioned and seconded. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion passes four to zero. Moving on to agenda item seven, the superintendent consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the superintendent consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, there's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accept and approve all items as listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated September 12th, 2022. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to agenda item 8.01, board consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the board consent agenda.
Is there a second? Second. There is a motion and a second. Siri is not part of this meeting. Same motion and a second that the Monroe School Board of Directors accept the board consent agenda dated uh September 12th, 2022. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes eight to zero. Moving on to agenda item 9.01, board comments. You'd like to go first? Go for it, Chuck.
My wife and I, Nancy, went to the fair and the first thing we did was visit the animal section. We viewed the dairy, the beef, goats, pigs, sheep and dogs. And we saw hundreds of animals. And the thing that struck me is that the, there was youth there from the third, essentially my estimate from the third to the 12th grade, learned about animal husbandry and responsibility for showing their animals. And Eddie Peterman got a grand champion for fitting and showing for his pig. But that was great to get a great champion. Uh, you know, after going through the last seven months, uh, I've been kind of burned out. And but going to the fair just renewed my spirit. I realized there's a lot of good things happening in the community. I realized that we have kids that are interested in many different aspects of learning, whether it's sports, academics, or other special interests that are helping them learn and grow. Uh, these kids and their parents are coming besides, beside them and supporting them. And I realize it's the friends, the family and the volunteers. And everything comes back to school. And that was something that renewed my spirit. Dr. Director Bumpus, and she said I could share fun things. So I'm going to share my, my pig story. When I was in uh basically in 4H from fourth to 12th grade. So I was in FF 4H and then FFA. And I was at the fair basically for nine years. I lived at the fair. If anybody can tell me what difference between a telegram and telegraph, I'll give you $20. You have no idea. Um, I showed a pig once. Her name was Doris. Pigs are miserable to show. While I was showing Doris, she got away from me. She ran across the show grounds and went to the dairy barn and got trapped and was trampled by the cows. I was so embarrassed. But to bring back the story of how this all started, in FFA, I had an opportunity to get a rotation animal. So the animal comes to you bred. You have the litter and then you have it bred before turning over to the next student. And looking at this fast fact, uh, Americans ate 10 million pigs in April. Doris had a litter of 13 pigs, being 300 pounds. She stepped on them or laid on them and so only eight piglets lived. Their names were Sally Butch, Pete, Peggy, Tom, Dog, Bruce and Dinner. Doris developed mastitis, which is an infection in the udder, and she couldn't feed the piglets. So I had the bottle feed the pigs for several weeks before they went on solid, solid food. The little baby pig is so soft and velvety in their nose. If you haven't had one, it's like you want to have them as an animal pet, but they do grow old and they get, they aren't as good. All this to say is that it renewed my spirit. I looked at students in this environment outside of school. I looked at the community of friends and volunteer. And we only see a small percentage of what happens in the student's life. There's so much more in an outside influence. You know, I, I think about my mother who's passed away a while ago. And she was the one that got me up to feed the pigs. And I'm sure she fed them many times herself and encouraged me to raise animals. And even though I was in sports, agriculture and animal husbandry has had much more of an effect in my life than any sports I was involved in. And she was the one that helped me to get uh state farmer. It's a designation you get where you have to fill out a book and fill out how much feed and how much it costs and the cost of the animal and uh how much produced from, what from that. And I have to tell you, the cutest thing I saw at the fair, so I've raised sheep for many years, was I happened to be there and we looked at a, there was an auction going on. So businesses were supporting uh kids who had livestock. And there was this little girl who had a cowboy hat, cowboy pants, a plaid shirt. And she was showing a Suffolk sheep and she was guiding it around. It was the cutest thing I have ever seen. And she got, I think, almost $800 for that animal. And there was a little boy in a similar situ, you know, similar outfit with this sheep, like 600 and another one got like 900. So an incredible amount of money. But businesses and individuals were helping support the student in that area of interest, just like everybody else pours into the students in many different aspects. So that's my little spiel.
Well, Chuck, you're always the hard one to follow. You're always making us laugh and telling good stories. Um, okay, so I have a little bit of an update. I've alluded to this before, but one thing that I was able to do um in our Celebrate the World Committee that had started last year, we were looking at more funding for library books in our schools. So I took it upon myself to partner with one of our incredible businesses here in Monroe that is always ready and willing to help out the district, our possible grocery outlet. And we came together and created cards. I have 300 of them, which I did pick up Saturday morning. So what you do is you present one of these cards. They scan the barcode before you begin checking out and 5% of every single purchase that you make will come back to the Monroe School District to fund books for our libraries. So this is a source when we're talking about uncertainty of a levy that will put more back into this district. It is good from August 15th to May 31st. It took the um printing company a little bit longer than expected to print these out, but they are good for that. And each month, whoops, we will be getting, we will be getting money back. And on the front of the card, it says MSD Better Together Library Books, because that is truly what I believe as a community, when we come together and we put forward our best, we are better together and we create the best learning environment possible for our students. Um, and this is one of the ways that we can give back and begin doing this. I'm super excited to get these into the hands of my fellow directors and also everyone at the district office and to get them disseminated into the schools and into the hands of parents and order more cards if necessary, which I hope is necessary. I hope we can get through all 300 of these and begin to order more. And a huge thank you to Linda and Terry at Grocery Outlet for being so generous and offering to do this when I came up and asked. So um, I'm so excited also, the start of the school year. My kids have already begun doing some of their work at home, wanting to get a head start because Sky Valley obviously doesn't start until the 20th. Um, but we are very excited for this year, for the new programs that are being offered and for ones that we are continuing in. It is just an incredible place with a great atmosphere where you truly see the diversity of our community come together for the betterment of our students. And the students there reap the rewards for it and are made better for it. They know that they have an entire community, an entire school that is behind them. And this is what I want to see for every child and every school um within this district. And I believe that this is something that we can do. So super excited to see where this year leads us and to hear more uplifting stories about kids and how they're growing, how they're learning, how they're excited, how our teachers are flourishing, how they feel supported and that they know that they have a school board that stands behind them and that supports them. That is just so important, I think, to where we are going and the heights which we are capable of reaching as we continue to work together and become unified um in our vision. So yep, that's all I have to say.
Keep the good times rolling. Um, I also got to go to the fair, got to meet with a couple of our students, um, learn about some bunnies, got to see some pigs be shown. It was, it was awesome. Um, and then also um got to go to the Fair Days Parade. I saw Nick there. Our band sounded great. Lots of students participated. That was a lot of fun. Um, and Chuck, like you said, just really cool to see the community come together. I know that our um district staff did a lot of work to make sure that that went off well. And so it was fun to start seeing people um even before the school year started. I also wanted to um just extend care for everybody impacted by the Bolt Creek Fire. Um, support from other districts. I wanted everybody to know, I actually received uh email from a neighboring district uh director um who was just expressing concern and, and said if there's anything that we need or that we think our neighboring districts would need, that they're there to support us. That was, you know, a, an extension of community that I hadn't experienced before, so I wanted to share that out. Um, but it is also really cool just to see the community coming together um along agriculture. You know, people sharing the land that they have to bring animals, people sharing their homes um and resources is wonderful. Um, and then I'll share about our back-to-school experience. I had already gotten to hear about this wonderful new music teacher at Malpe, so that's exciting. Um, on the first day, so I've got this year, first grader and fifth grader. Um, we are part of that new, new group that is back on buses and they are thrilled to be on the bus. And Mr. Dom is a wonderful bus driver. He's really kind and gives good directions for when it's safe for them to cross the road. Um, and when they got home first day, I got, school was great and I am so happy. And I have never, you know, like I said, just first grade and fifth grade, but still for the fifth grader. Like I can remember some challenging days in kindergarten and um, and we're just in a different place now. And they are thrilled. They've been excited to go to school every day. They're getting up and helping me make lunches. Um, my fifth grader has a new teacher, which, you know, was maybe had some anxiety about before school started and all of that has been relieved. They're just thrilled. Um, so I just want to thank everybody, I think, as a team. Everyone's working so well together and supporting each other. It's so cool to see. That buzz really is everywhere. Um, I, I get to hear about all of you like sporadically, like Dan, I got to hear about just, just that people feel so supported through the hiring process, like people are excited to come and work from Monroe. And I think you're a huge part of that. Um, Marcy, I think people have been so excited to have you in spaces, you know, and, and to see you and to have you be accessible. And I think that that's so wonderful. Um, so just all of you, I really appreciate you. I'm so excited about the new communication system that we're reaching more people. Um, and for elementary and secondary, they're just all so excited to be back together and it's so cool. So thank you for making that happen. We're getting some mood lighting in here. So it's sort of like the music and I'll wrap it up.
Okay, last thing that I forgot. Do not forget that this coming Sunday, the 18th of September is the Mental Health Fair. You are going to want to be there. You are not going to want to miss this. This is going to be an incredible event for the community to come together and talk about mental health and have access to tons of resources. I can't even believe how much this event is growing by the day the Monroe School District, I am told, will also have a booth there. We wouldn't miss out on this event. Um, it's, it's just going to be a fabulous time. Please attend if you can. I believe it starts at 10:00 AM if I'm not mistaken.
Also awesome back-to-school event for our, our family. Son Jude is like just exhausted right now. Uh, he's in eighth grade. Mr. Moser, uh, who is a new hire also, we got from Cincinnati. Like, we're getting out there, Dan. Should be doing his homework, studying for his 13 colonies map quiz. I'm looking on campus right now. Uh, so embarrassed my, my, but the thing is, is that my 13-year-old, where he's just like, huh, he's excited. And that is a big deal for, for me as well. And so I'm really excited about that. And uh Chuck, I would like to send you a, a telegram message via telegraph on my coded electronic system to you. You can pay me later. You can pay me later. About the pig that I saw at the fair named Christine Penelope Bacon, AKA Chris P. Bacon. And, uh, super cute. And did you, did you get to hold the piglets that were born? Oh my, like two of them survived and they were gorgeous and super small. Only two, yeah, it was rough. I think there was eight that were born and two made it. Yeah, it was sad. And the Campbells had a great time, went to the races. My kids were out right up on the line screaming their heads off and just having a blast. And I think all of this, we're blessed in Monroe to have that fair here. I know it's a nightmare for traffic for a couple of weeks, but it is just, all of this creates this momentum. And this is good. And I want to continue to capitalize on that. Just a quick announcement, part of August and September is Hispanic Heritage Month. So Be My Mexico here on the 15th. Most Latin American countries have their Independence Day between August and September. You know, I've known that, like well over half of them. And so that's exciting, especially because we have a very large Hispanic population in our school districts, our school, our school district. And wanted to give an update on, we had a interview today for our new student director position for the junior position. So Nathan's counterpart, and we will have a announcement for that recommendation. Jen was supposed to be a part of that, but again, she wasn't here today, so Molly filled in for her. I was there. Erin and Nathan was there, had great conversation. And so we had our interviews today with four of the students who had applied for that. Something is an interesting point that we kind of all saw was that we had one of the questions and there was, you know, changes that you make in the district and challenges, but one more thing was, what is the district doing well? And all four students were from very four different backgrounds. And none of them knew what each other said. They're all in there at different times. And every single one of them said that the feeling of inclusivity in our district is going very, very well. And I was just like totally taken aback because of all of the difficulty we've had. It's obvious that our staff has worked very hard to make all students feel very valued, included. Obviously, there's areas of growth, but for me, that's a total flip of, of where students were at, a temperature check. That was just a really encouraging thing that I wanted to share with our board in that process. And so I believe Erin has passed on that information to Dr. Larson, and she'll send that out to the rest of the board for recommendations. And I believe for us to make a decision on that in our next meeting. So that's all I have to say about that right now. And then wanted to thank President Bumpus for letting me back up quarterback today. I hope I didn't mess it up too much. I think that's everything else. And I want to say thank you guys for coming tonight. And let's, let's capitalize on the momentum that we have this year. Go Bearcats. And maybe we can get out here to catch the end of the Seahawks game. Nothing else is there. This meeting is, it is 7:55 PM, adjourned.